How are you doing, Grace?
Uh, we're pretty good here.
Hello?
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Can you see me?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Lucky you. Of all the virtual meetings that I've attended, this is the first time I've ever turned my camera on, so...
Is Carrie going to stay?
Um, he's going to stay for, to make sure it all works.
Grace, do we have everybody on that's gonna be on?
Um, I think so. I have a couple walking in still.
Beg your pardon?
I still have a couple people walking in.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Roundway. I got down, I'll probably go down to the parking garage when my friend out says, "I can't use the Journey, I'm locked." Then just bring me another study key.
Okay, I think they're ready, Ken.
Okay, who's taking the roll today?
That would be me. So we've got Mr. Loheed.
Here.
Mr. Munson.
Here.
Mr. Birch.
Here.
Mr. Gus. Mr. Brightling.
Here.
Mr. Olson. Dr. Mahoney. Ms. Navatney.
Here.
And Ms. Schiffer.
Is that it, then?
Yep.
Okay. If my count is right, we should have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. I have before you the, the meeting minutes of February 27th. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Yes.
I have a second. I don't know who made the motion.
Who made the motion?
That would be me, Brad Olson.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda, we have public hearing items today, uh, under E. Uh, first item is number one. We will open the public hearing for the Meadowlark Stable subdivision. Is there any public comment? While we're waiting for that, Grace, do you want to give us a summation of this one, please?
Uh, so the applicant is seeking approval of a minor subdivision, the flat one lot, approximately nine point nine acres. They're requesting to allow for construction of a single-family home, horse stable, riding arena, and pasture for horses. And then it'll be private, and then you do the same highway road access ditches, um, for storm sewer, rural water, and on-site septic.
Okay. Is there any public comments?
I think the riding arena.
Beg your pardon?
How big is the riding arena? Is there any plans, not that they have to, I'm just curious? Am I here?
The riding arena will be fifty by forty.
Fifty by forty?
Yes. And then you have it approved through the county.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to ask that if, uh, if anybody's, you know, asking questions or, you know, requiring comment to, to, uh, announce your name first. That way, everybody that's online can, can know who's, who's speaking. Any, any further public comment? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. Uh, you've heard the information. What are your wishes?
This is Brightling speaking to accept the findings and recommendations of staff, and recommend approval to the County Commission of subdivision application, as the proposal meets the goals and objectives of the Cass County Comprehensive Plan, the Cass County Highway Access Plan, the flood damage prevention ordinance, and the Cass County subdivision ordinance, and all other applicable regulations with the following conditions: a deed restriction be recorded that meets requirements of Section 308 of Cass County subdivision ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Duane. Is there a second?
Ms. Navatney, second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. In this particular case, uh, where we're virtual this, this way, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Loheed?
Yeah.
Other question?
Oh, sorry.
Property here asked, what will be the access point for the property? Is there another access being allowed other than what is existing on the church property?
Yeah, from the, uh, because of the, the sign on the county road, from the county's jurisdiction, we're not allowing any additional access, because it was just access off of the existing.
So is that crossing on this Keith Munson, is the crossing on church property access, or is it?
It's currently a shared access on the property line.
On the line?
Right, on the east edge of the parcel, and on the west edge of the church parcel.
Is there any further discussion?
Okay. Mr. Loheed?
Yes.
Mr. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Brightling?
Yes.
Ms. Navatney?
Yes.
Yeah, the sound here seems to be going in and out. Is that?
I carry unanimously.
Okay, very good. The motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda, item number two. Uh, public hearing has been scheduled for the Olsons' acre subdivision. Is there any public comment? Grace, would you give us a summation of this one, too, please?
So the property owner is looking to plot off his parcel to build a new house where the current home is. And it'll be set back to appropriate distance from the right away. And then it'll just use existing utilities.
This is an existing, uh, existing, uh, farmstead site, it's just with the new construction, the new homes, and then they wanna reduce the overall land size of the, of the farmstead.
Exactly.
Yes.
For what reason?
They want, like, to bank one of this smaller property for the house loan.
So it'll u- utilize the existing access off of 104, and generally, from the average person driving by, they won't see any difference from what the existing farmstead is, to what they want in terms of the new, the new home that was constructed.
Yeah, this is Todd Olson. Yeah, that is correct. It'll, it'll just, uh, be a little closer to the road from the existing house.
Hey, any, any further public comment? Any questions such? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. We'll go back to the regular commission meeting. You folks have heard the information. Uh, what are your wishes?
Commissioner Brightling, uh, I move to accept the findings and recommendations of staff, and recommend approval to the County Commission of the subdivision application, as the proposal meets the goals and objectives of the Cass County Comprehensive Plan, the Cass County Highway Access Plan, the flood damage prevention ordinance, the Cass County subdivision ordinance, and all other applicable regulations with the following condition: a deed restriction be recorded that meets requirements of Section 308 of the Cass County subdivision ordinance.
This is Rocky Birch. I move to, uh, second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? I can hear some conversation in the background, uh...
That's not it.
Can we turn it up or not, or?
No, yeah.
That's, that's not part, okay.
You're good.
Okay, well, hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Navatney?
Yes.
Mr. Brightling?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Loheed?
Yeah. Okay, uh, the motion has passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is also another public hearing item. It is the E-Tel subdivision. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Grace, would you give us the summation of this one, please?
Uh, the applicant is seeking approval of a minor subdivision entitled the E-Tel subdivision, flat one lot, subdivision of approximately two point nine three acres. According to the applicant, subdivision is requested to sell off two point nine three acres to allow for a new home to be built on the new lot. The proposed ownership and maintenance responsibility of the subdivision will be private. The subdivision will use an existing 147th Avenue, South East Road access, ditches for storm sewer conveyance, public water, and on-site septic systems for wastewater treatment.
Okay, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Any public comment, any question? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. You folks have heard the information. Uh, what are your wishes?
Um, I have a question. We're waiving a ten-acre minimum here, Ken, as far as a farmstead or a site, because it's a previous farmstead. Is that right? No?
The township only calls for two acres.
Yeah, the township doesn't call for two acres.
Doesn't call for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, every township has their own minimum lot size, and, uh, the usual is, uh, two acres, two and a half acres, that type of thing. In this particular case, it's, uh, it's over that, and I'm assuming the township has already approved this. Is that correct, Grace?
I have not heard, no comments from you prior to this.
He signed off on the flat, though.
Yes, he did sign the flat.
Okay. Okay. The end result is, on a lot of these different, uh, plats and things of that nature, you know, the, the plat can be approved and what have you, but townships do have the final vote in terms of, do they issue a building permit or not? And that's totally up to the townships. Um, with a, you know, the, they need to be in control when they're dealing with things like this. Okay, what are your wishes on this one?
This is Ms. Navatney. I move to accept the findings and recommendations of staff, and recommend approval to the County Commission of the subdivision application, as the proposal meets the goals and objectives of the Cass County Comprehensive Plan, the Cass County Highway Access Plan, the flood damage prevention ordinance, the Cass County subdivision ordinance, and all other applicable regulations, with the following condition: that a deed restriction be recorded that meets requirements of Section 308 of the Cass County subdivision ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, that, that was Duane, right?
That's correct.
Oh, thank you, sir. Hey, you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Olson?
Hi.
Mr. Brightling?
Yes.
Mr. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Loheed?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Ms. Navatney?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed. We will move on to the next one here, item number four. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled for this. We'll open the public hearing for the FMD Pleasant subdivision. On your previous, uh, previous agenda, that showed up as the diversion first subdivision. The name has been changed. So, is there any public comment? Grace, or Jason, would you give us a rundown on this, please?
Uh, yeah, this is Jason. I'll, I'll cover this. So, um, this, uh, this is the first plat of the diversion subdivision. The FM diversion, the diversion authority, has determined that, um, moving forward to ensure, uh, proper development and, uh, handling the existing easements that cross the different land and properties that they're acquiring and constructing the version on, that, uh, that they would like to plat the larger, uh, footprint of the sub, of the FM diversion. And, uh, so, uh, this larger plat encompasses, um, I guess, really, two, two different areas, both on the east and west side of the 173rd Avenue area, south of Penrose 16, and it encompasses the construction site for the Wildridge River Control Structure, uh, for the FM diversion project. So by, uh, by planning this area, it'll have one state U.S. parcel on both sides of 173rd to encompass this, uh, this new control structure site.
Okay, is there any further public comment? Any questions that anyone might have? Any further public comment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and go back to the regular commission meeting. You folks have heard the information. What are your wishes?
I have a question. This is the plat vacate a portion of 173rd?
Commissioner Brightling, this is, uh, yeah, this is Jason Munson. Yes, that's, uh, part of the plat, that it will continue, uh, access to the one farm site for rural residence, site on 173rd, but then, um, from that, uh, from that res- rural residential site further south, it will be 173rd and the existing, uh, sixty-six foot wide.
This is, this is Rocky Birch. This isn't meant for development. It's more for houseke- or housekeeping.
Right, this is, right. So the, the, the main components that are gonna be... So the main components that are going to be constructed on this site are the embankment, it'll be about an 18 to 20 foot high embankment as part of the diversion project, as well as the wild rice control structure, which is currently being constructed on dry land and it'll have large steel gates that will ultimately be connected for the river channel to be moved over, flow through that gated area, so that during the operation of the diversion, those gates can close and reduce the flows into the protected area. That's the main function for this site. From a development standpoint, it's a large gated structure and a small control building and the rest will be urban components that are constructed as part of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Hey, is there a motion?
Commissioner Breitling, I move to accept the findings and recommendations of staff and recommend approval to the county commission of the subdivision application as the proposal meets the goals and objectives of the Cass County Comprehensive Plan, the Cass County Highway Access Plan, the flood damage prevention ordinance, the Cass County subdivision ordinance, and all other applicable regulations.
Okay, very good. Take your pardon, I didn't hear that.
Rocky Birch, I need a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Or any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Breitling?
Yes.
Ms. Vatney?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Lohee?
Okay, the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing item, that is a hearing for the application requesting a variance from the county subdivision standards combined auditors lot three through six and part of lot seven, return the property to a nine acre parcel located in Reed Township. We'll open the public hearing, is there any public comment?
Deborah Kravenhoff, and I have some property out there. I'm kind of concerned about the driveway that they want to drive between my mom's property and my property, like a private driveway to get to the property. So I'm wondering if the driveway could be off 17 or off 20 somehow there. And then also, there's a concern because of the floodwaters when they come up, just like the lake out there. I mean, I can remember voting in that property to get to my house. So if there's like a dike around it or something, that's going to push more water towards all of the other people who live in that area as well. So I guess those are kind of my concerns. And then the private drive that we have there, we, you know, kind of always liked them not so busy enough, so, you know, we like not having a development there for one thing. But I guess that's my concern.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Yes, my name is Linda Schultz, I'm here with my husband Gary Schultz, and I'm just going to read three things, is that concerning? I've known, we live at the end of Island Drive, which is a private road accessing lots two, three, and four of Cheyenne Valley Farm subdivision. And on the information given from this meeting, which is this item here, the property owner notification area, it's correctly listed as 48th Avenue North. It should be Island Drive that runs north and south, but they have it listed as 48th Avenue North. And so I just wanted to call attention to that error. The second item here, 48th Avenue North, is and has been a private road for the last 40 years that we've lived here, it's been maintained independently by various entities enjoying it. And future traffic from an additional household or households, we fear would degrade the road by adding serious wear and tear. And my question is, why are these lots proposed for slot 10 LLC not granted their own access to county route 17 when other areas north and south of 48th Avenue North have their own access? And the third item, sometime in the past month, trucks from border states paving constructed and raised a road south of blocks private drive, we would like to know who authorized this construction on what appears to be a section line? And where were the concerns for the massive overland flooding that occurs in these fields? The west end of 48th Avenue North goes underwater during underland flooding, overland flooding, and a barrier like this could impede water flowing east to the drainage ditch, further jeopardizing access to our property. And why were we not notified of that?
Hey, any further public comment?
Yeah, this is Mark Anderson, also a property owner, adjacent to this property in question. And I guess I share some of the concerns of the other folks there, as well as the access to the property. As Linda mentioned, 48th Avenue is a private road. Cheyenne Valley Road is what the plat, the original subdivision labeled it as. So that in addition to the road in front of the other, I guess the road going south that they're proposing, that's also private. So that's a bit concerning as well.
Okay, thank you.
Camera Schneider, I have a question. Will there be a housing development, is that part of the plan with this property?
Can you speak up a little while?
Is that property, is there intent for a housing development?
So this is Grace Puffy. The applicant is seeking to combine the lots three through seven to those one residential house, not a development, it is just one.
This is Deborah Kravenhoff. On this one paper, it says that Reed Township approved a building permit for this property with the condition that the lots were joined back into a single parcel, but then on the next sentence, it says, "We are seeking preliminary thoughts and recommendations from the county planning commission on the feasibility of subdividing this property." So that's why the question.
It'd be combining them back into that one lot.
So it's not going to be like a...
No, it wouldn't be a subdivision. Well, it'd be combined back into one and then it would follow the subdivision ordinance.
I think a little explanation into the larger request for variance. So this lot, this larger lot, has been there for quite some time. And then around 2011, it was split into five separate lots through just a normal auditor lot split, which is a non-development split. Auditor's lot split is something that would be more for, you know, splitting up ag land or, but not splitting for specific development. That's what the subdivision process is for. And so what the current owner is requesting is that if he was to combine these five lots back into the original one lot, to seek a variance to be able to build on that without subdividing because of the fact that there's too many other homes and rural residential in that area and there's, he would have to seek another 30 acres, 30 plus acres to deed restrict in order to be allowed to go through the full subdivision process without a variance. And so, the variance is basically, that he's requesting is saying, if he could go back to the original larger lot instead of the five smaller lots, build a single residential, then not have to go through the full subdivision process because of the fact that there's all those other development rights and there's already been development in that area. So that's the big picture of what he's requesting. If the variance isn't approved, then he would have to go through the full subdivision process and deed restrict and then he would have to, basically would have to request from that, from an adjacent landlord to deed restrict the remaining. So just, I want to make sure clear what's being asked and Grace, if there's anything else to clarify on that, please.
This is Kate Munson. So this property is now split into five lots, correct? That's what it is right now?
Correct, yes.
He wants to get rid of that, go back to one big lot so he can build one residence. Where's the access to the highway for that residence proposed to be?
The current access that he was looking at was coming out of 48th Avenue and then coming down along the quarter mile. But as has been commented, that appears to be private. And then he doesn't have an access easement, so if that's the case, and in my, the discussions that I had with him, I don't know about Grace, but that didn't appear to be an issue in the past, but if that's an issue, then his only other access would be granted on the county 17, which because his property borders the south of that quarter, with our access ordinance, could be allowed to have an access on the 170.
In the southeast corner of his lot there?
Right. It would, the distance between that southeast corner and 48th wouldn't quite be a quarter mile spacing that we require, but it would be close enough that I think it could be
This is Commissioner Breitling. I'm going to move that we table to consideration of this until we have a clear determination as to whether or not there is a road on the north side that can, an access point that presently exists somewhere by statute or by deed that might be recorded somewhere.
Okay, we have a motion to table. The motion to table requires a second.
This is Rocky Birch, I will second that.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to table. It's non-debatable. I will call for the vote. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes say no. Motion carries, it has been tabled. Excuse me, I should have went back, should have closed the public hearing and went back to the commission meeting. Is everyone okay if we just move forward the way we have here?
Yep.
You know, and I realize I might be a little out of place here, but Jason, just a quick question on that last one, just for better knowledge of this down the road. That particular location, you know, was obviously ag land. Where was the ag access to that parcel?
Commissioner Lohee, right now that the ag access is further to the south, closer to 120. Yes, so, and I know looking at past serial photos, it appeared that they had come in from the south.
Okay, not just the clarification in my brain, so.
Ken, Kate Munson here, if you look at the section or the quarter south of that, there's a kind of a thin line between where it says northeast quarter, southeast quarter.
Right.
Kind of a grass road, that's a road that was all the way south to county 20.
Okay. That gives me a little better picture, thanks, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Grace, do we have any new business?
Ken, this is Rocky Birch. We have people here that are disputing some of this or have questions. I think we should put something in writing for the next meeting on what your issues are with this property, so we can see it more clearly. If you could put something in writing and give it to us so we can review that, that would be good.
No, there would certainly be nothing wrong with that to, you know, have the information in writing for everybody.
And that could just go to Grace's planner and she would distribute that.
Right, include it in the packet for the next board action.
Jerome Kravenoff, how soon would you need that, the request, or what Mr. Birch requested here?
Like a week before.
A week? Grace has confirmed this probably won't be on the end of July meeting. It would be on the August meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Kate Munson, I have a question for you guys that are concerned about this. Are you concerned because you thought there was going to be five houses going up there? Or do you have objections to the owner willing one? Jerome Kravenoff, the people are concerned that that road had been listed as a private drive developed by Mr. Block. That, right, I know what you're talking about. And there had been no contesting of that before because the four plots that are north of it or are adjacent to that road are all one family. That's a concern. And another concern was, who laid down the gravel or worked on the road before this was even approved? Who did? So if he is allowed access off the 17, then it's not an issue? Away from that private road? Right. Off the 17. That's the convention, yes. Then it would be an issue, in our defense, is a concern.
Okay.
Sorry, this is some road that you'd have to ask the township if they approve that. If not, I'm guessing that he did it on his own. I know that that wouldn't have been something that would have come.
I would assume that's a private drive.
Right.
Ken, I have a question because of the floodwaters, you know, 48th Avenue in the west part goes underwater, and to me, this is an obstruction.
goes underwater and to me this is an obstruction, you know, it can displace. Am I not correct?
Correct.
It's, it's solid, there isn't a covert.
The road is just, it's just, it's, it's spicely behold.
And I'm wondering who approved it and what do you do about it? Are they not following FEMA rules?
So the township controls the floodplain there, that they do the floodplain management. So it would be to talk to, uh, Mark McAllister and probably Alf Risinger for the township and to go to their next board meeting to discuss, uh, the floodplain concerns because they, they manage the floodplain from the FEMA flood insurance program standpoint. So they would be the ones allowing for any development within the floodplain there.
Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll move forward on this. Uh, we'll, we'll have this, uh, come up in another meeting. Uh, you know, please do your research into the, you know, what Reed Township has in mind here. You know, they, they're, they approved building permits and, uh, uh, road building and that type of thing. So, uh, you know, check with them and, uh, you know, uh, make your concerns known in that regard. Any, any further new business? Grace?
Um, so previously there was a vice chair for the planning commission. It's something that we're thinking we'll bring back just for the schedules of everyone. So if there's something that you'd be interested in, let me know and we can get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Uh, I would certainly appreciate that. Our last vice chair retired, so to speak, so. They're on the, on the planning commission, so we do need a, do need a, a vice chair, please. Okay, next item on the agenda, old business. Grace, anything there?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, Grace, is there anything further to come before us? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Keith Munson, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Well, congratulations, folks. We got through this in under an hour. We're, we're living up for our, our, our fame of being a fast meeting.
A week before, a week before the next meeting, probably. Grace, when is the next?